Fall this meeting of the Upshur County Board of Education. The order, first order of business is to stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have the mission statement, please?
Sure. The mission of the Upshur County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Thank you, Dr. Allman. Let the clerk note that all members are present with the exception of Katie Loudon. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and/or agenda adjustments.
We do have additions to personnel which are included, and you should have a separate sheet underneath for the bids or the snow.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented with the additions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Next item on your agenda are the minutes from the October 24, 2017 regular meeting. Questions about those or...
Have we accepted them as written?
Thank you, Dr. Allman.
Second motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item six, acknowledgements and/or announcements of your highlights.
The only announcement I have is our Elks Teens of the Month. We're, and I'm going to get, say her name wrong, Desiree Lindo, Lindal. And Ben Nolte. And we have some winners from the recent trip to, where did you go, Indianapolis?
Well, we had winners in Indianapolis, and we had innovation contests in more field opportunities, and there were the NBA team that won their division, and they're going to compete for the state title next Friday, this Friday. Next item on the agenda is the LSIC Faculty Senate Reports. We have Buchanan Upshur Middle School first.
Mr. Fraser is attempting to find me a stand so I don't have to wear my glasses the whole time. Okay, so that's fine. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Renee Warner, and I'm the principal of Buchanan Upshur Middle School. I know all of you, and thank you for having us tonight. And before we get started, while Mr. Fraser is trying to get my PowerPoint up, that's just my guide, we have a couple of pictures in there, there we go. Want to tell you a little bit, Mrs. Rogers and I just came back from our principals' conference this weekend, and we got to hear Sunday night Tony Coridi, who talked about telling your story. And so when I got back to the room on Monday after our sessions, I changed my PowerPoint around and decided that you'd get to hear a little bit of our story in a little different way. I've added some pictures, not too many, just two or three, but approaching this in a little different way this year. I'd like to thank the few faculty and staff that are here, Jackie McDaniels, Lisa Kreitz, Jenny Davidson, who we share with the high school, and also my Faculty Senate President behind me, who you'll hear from in just a minute, Amanda Hedner. So we're excited to be here with you tonight. Our first requirement this evening is to talk about the school goals and the strategic plan. The first one is that Buchanan Upshur Middle School will develop a learner-centered climate and provide optimal teaching and learning environments with 90% or more of our classroom observations of student engagement at levels three through six combined based on IPI data by the fourth collection period. And as we talked about last year, and all of the schools are doing the IPIs, the instructional practices inventory, looking at levels from one through six, one being complete disengagement of everyone in the room, level six being those high student, high-level thinking, individually-based activities. From our most recent IPI walkthrough, 11%, we're just over 11% of ones and twos, which are complete disengagement and student work with teacher not engaged, we are at 88% for all of the others, three, fours, fives, and sixes. And so that has, we're almost sure our goal. I'm hopeful we'll get, we'll go beyond our goal for this year. But the thing that we added this year was that the IPI team shared from their walkthroughs some great ideas from what they saw that day, and those ranged from creating maps to error analysis when a student saw a mistake, they could analyze that and share with the class how to fix that mistake, creating planets, among many others that they were able to come up with. Another goal is that our PBIS program continues and that we are doing that through the sale framework. We're moving into tier two of the PBIS structure this year, which takes students who are in those high-need areas, the ones that are repeat offenders in our discipline system, and create intervention groups for students each quarter in the areas especially of disruptive and disrespectful behavior. Our advisory lessons focus around respect and responsibility to address that. Our PBIS tickets are given by all staff members to students exhibiting the different qualities of the sale logo. Buccaneers are safe, accountable, and control, and lead by example. You'll see our logo here in a little bit. Our first quarter reward was held a couple of weeks ago, and additional activities are planned throughout the year. And as we have done in the last couple of years, teachers are expected to enter all levels of discipline, including level one, and act on those. Those include parent phone calls, when they, you know, when they've intervened with a parent phone call, a student conference, and exclusion from out of the classroom for the period. Level two infractions are dealt with by administration and anything higher. And this year in addition, we're focusing on classroom management through our school professional learning communities to help assist our teachers with those level one disruptive and disrespectful conduct issues. So we're hopeful that that's going to make an impact for us. And of course, when we talk about test scores, we are hopeful to show growth in ELA and mathematics. Our test scores once again were lower than we'd like them to be. The shining light is that in mathematics, we increased in every grade level. In 14, 15, in math, six, seven, and eight, we were 13, 14, and 9% proficient. In 15, 16, that went to 18%, 21%, and 13%. And this past year, in sixth grade, 20% proficient, which went up 2%. In seventh grade, 24% proficient, which went up 3%, and in eighth grade, 17% proficient, which went up 4%. So we're going in the right direction, just not quickly enough. We did show decreases in ELA in the sixth and the eighth grade. Sixth grade, 34% proficient. Seventh grade did go up, and it's 46% proficient, and eighth grade was 33% proficient in ELA. We are providing a little additional collaboration time for our special ed and general ed teachers to get together to plan and to collaborate, not just in the 47 minutes that they're together during their classes during the day. Students are with their special education teachers during our care times, three days a week, to help them with their remediation portions. We're providing performance tasks and close reading examples in all reading and English classes. In math, of course, we've been concerned for years about the misalignment between our standards and our textbooks. We are in an adoption year this year, and so we're hopeful, and after I got back from my conference, I saw some really great math materials, so I'm hopeful that that will change with this next adoption. Our teachers, our math teachers are using Eureka Math this year and are finding some success with that program. A little frustration as well because it takes a lot more planning at this point, but their students are responding well. Many of our special education teachers are collaborating in a subject area in which they teach that small subject area, that, in a small class later. For example, Marissa Meadows collaborates with Clayton Tenney, who is a math teacher, and then she teaches eighth-grade math to special education students in a smaller city. And we have a school-wide focus on English, language arts, and math remediation lessons on Thursdays during our care period. That is a school-wide lesson designed by our ELA teachers top one week, and then the next week by our math teachers. Those are grade-level appropriate and basic skills lessons developed by those departments. Juggling, did you notice? Our next section is on parents and community. There we go. Parent and community involvement, our programs that support this. Of course, we hold our open house at the very beginning of the year, and then two parent-teacher conferences throughout the year. We just completed one at the beginning of November, we'll have another one in February. The middle school, when I went there 12 years ago, I found that they meet with more parents than I had ever seen in any school, because parent meetings occur during the day in a lot of cases there, whether those be IUPs, 504s, just student assistance team meetings, or just a team meeting where a parent has requested a meeting with their teachers, or the teachers have said, hey, let's get together and talk about this. So we have a lot of parents come through the middle school. We have parent volunteers through PTO, through fundraisers, and through our office work. Right now, with only one secretary in Office B, we have a couple of really great parent volunteers who come in a couple of times a week and have made a huge impact for us. We have guest speakers throughout our curriculum, anyone from any curriculum area, from health, science, social studies, reading, of course, tech ed, as he brings in our career exploration as well. We utilize live grades. We have great celebrations, our Heritage Fair, our celebration of achievement at the end of the school year, and coming up on Friday is our Veterans Celebration. You should have received an invitation already. I'll go ahead and express that to you all at Friday at 8:30 a.m., and we'll invite anybody that's interested in coming down if you're able. We will be celebrating the veterans who are in the lives of our students. It's a wonderful hour-long presentation, very reverent assembly, and it's one of our finest things that we do at the middle school. Of course, our sports and our concerts that occur are also part of our parent and community involvement. We are heavily involved with the community. Tenerton Community Council meets at our school monthly and holds their Harvest in the Hills there every fall. The Rotary has just completed their blood screening. The school-based health clinic is with us three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And our craft show is coming up next weekend after Thanksgiving as well. Our PTO works with many community groups through the Buccaneer Card, many community businesses. Stalker Youth Center runs their bus to our school Monday through Thursday. We have several students participating in their programs. Of course, we have partnerships with West Virginia Wesleyan College, Glumville, Alderson Broadus, and WVBU for student teachers and clinicals and other mentorships. Our pro agreement with the Sheriff's Department continues to be an outstanding partnership, and I'll talk about celebrations in just a minute. This is a picture of a donation to our VUMS bounty, which is our pantry program. The Board of Realtors donated items to us before school began. They just kept unloading things out of their cars. That's not a full picture. I couldn't get the wide enough picture in there, but they made us able to give out bags to our 80 students by Friday of the first week of school. So we were very fortunate to have that great partnership there. And then we also have Summit Center Youth Health and Appalachian, Summit Center of Youth Health come in and speak to our students who are clients of theirs. We have lots of those partnerships happening. And Appalachian Impact continues to mentor some of our students, and they have started a cohort with about eight of our seventh graders who, not behavior issues, but attendance and grade issues, and they are meeting with those students weekly. And so we are hopeful that that's going to make an impact as well. Our programs that encourage school volunteerism and mentorship, of course, we continue to have an active student council. We have assistant programs and in-school suspension, the library, the office, tech ed, and our computer applications classes. We have our clubs that run some outside of school, many in school, and we meet with our clubs almost every Friday, not all the time, but most Fridays. Fellowship of Christian Students, a 4-H Club, Math Counts meets weekly, Recycling Club, Archery and Air Rifle meets every Sunday, as you know, and the Wildlife Club. And once again, every student is a member of a school club that meets on Friday, and that's just another connection to an adult in a non-academic way. I mentioned our Veterans Celebration, and our students are heavily involved in the planning and implementation of that celebration, as you will see if you get to join us on Friday. Our students also do a lot of supply drives, and those have now included our pantry. We did a food drive during Red Ribbon Week with kid-friendly food, so that we could put it in our pantry and be able to send that home to kids instead of taking all of that to the parish house. It's benefiting our own. They also hold Humane Society pet supply drives and toy drives. And of course, Project Isaac is continuing to go forward this year, and former students of the middle school come down and volunteer as well. We have some high school students. This picture is Marissa Meadows, and she is surrounded by school supplies. We adopted a Texas classroom right after the flooding, and we had, what was it, 10 or 20? 20 boxes of supplies or 20? 20 boxes of school supplies that we sent. Sprint paid the postage on all of those. And in addition to that, the students raised over $1,500, and we took pies in the face for that. So we were on, in the record delta with all of that activity. It was a lot of fun, but it's such a great thing to see our students volunteering in that way. We have no waivers that have been submitted to the Department of Education. And one of the things that we are doing to promote a productive and safe school environment, probably the most important, is that logo right there. Everything that we do at the middle school these days is framed around that framework of Buccaneers Sale. Buccaneers are safe, accountable, lead by example, are in control, and lead by example. Sorry, I had that in the wrong order. Took the wrong picture. But underneath that framework are things like our pantry program, our school-wide discipline procedures, including retraining, new detention, in-school suspension, our out-of-school suspension reentry program in which we meet with the students that have been suspended, talk about what happened and how they can make different choices, and in some cases, additional counseling by our school counselors. We pay close attention to our special education students who have, for many years, stayed with their advisory teacher for three years. Now we also do that with all of our students, and we have those advisory meetings weekly. Those weekly advisory group meetings include lessons in character education, bullying prevention, career exploration, classroom organizational skills, and we would not be able to do that without the help of not only our PBIS team, but our counselors Kathy McCauley and Tanya Zikafus, who just do an outstanding job of our advisory program. Our evaluation system continues to support our teachers in which they do self-reflections, and we conduct quarterly observations for those teachers who are in their first or second year of teaching. I mentioned club meetings, which are more connections. Those include Rachel's Challenge Clubs, Drama Club, National Junior Honor Society. I mentioned recycling, and of course, our Citizenship and Patriotism Club that will be active on Friday as well. We have weekly administrative meetings and weekly office staff meetings. The principals get together on Mondays, the counselors, TIS, and the PRO join us on Thursdays. It's just a great time to reconnect, to make sure that we are, have at the forefront all of those things that are concerning us, whether it be individual students, big things that we need to address, kind of a check on inconsistencies if we have those within our discipline, and we dissect our discipline information at those meetings as well. We have cyberbullying presentations going on this week, presented by Officer Day and our Technology Integration Specialist. And our PBIS committee continues to work with the staff and the students to improve the climate of the school through recognition programs, volunteer opportunities, and our year-long focus on the developmental assets through the Search Institute. Those are all the required parts. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the celebrations that we have had throughout the year already. Our school has, for the second year, done an opening of school tailgate luncheon on Convocation Day, and nearly all of our staff and faculty attended that. They really like each other, and they like spending time together, and that was a real great way to develop camaraderie right before, right as we started into the school year. Project Isaac I mentioned earlier, it began on September 11th this year. We weren't able to get it going until January last year, so we were thrilled that DJ Stout stepped in to be the coordinator this year and was able to get everything started. On September 11th, we're serving 46 students after school Monday through Thursday in that program. CJ Day, our Prevention Resource Officer for several years, was named the West Virginia Prevention Resource Officer of the Year in the entire state of West Virginia, 98 PROs, and he was chosen to be the one. So we're very proud of him and continue to rely on him for many things. Mentorship, probably most important. Our seventh grade went to NASA in October, got to play with robots, had a lot of fun, and they ate it up. They were thrilled to go. Eighth grade came to Westland to see the Golden Horseshoe play, which was a great time. I have perfect attendance for staff listed there for first quarter. 26% of our staff out of 98 people, 26% of them had perfect attendance, either zero or one professional leave day. 24% only missed one day. So that's 50% of our staff at zero or one, and that's awesome. So we credit the board with the attendance policy for that, and that our staff is committed to being in the classroom and teaching our students. Our first quarter reward, in addition to doing some individual things that students can use their tickets for through the year, we get our kids together for different criteria through the year for some bigger events. First quarter, students that had a 3.5 or higher got to join us for archery tag. Those are four of my teachers. I'll not tell you who they are, you can guess that later, but we got to participate after 310 students played archery tag all day long. We got to put on the masks and try to shoot each other as well. It wasn't pretty. We were hot and sweaty, but it was fun. And the kids absolutely loved it. Of course, we have just celebrated Red Ribbon Week, College Exploration Week. Our fall sports season is over, and our students were very successful. We're beginning our winter season now. Students at West Virginia Wesleyan College student teachers have been able to hear staff from our school talk about expectations and things to look for, things to learn about. We have clinical students that were able to come to our PLC meeting just recently. A celebration that Teresa Blend, my assistant principal, is cancer-free, and she will be returning to us in January. But in the meantime, and this is a big celebration for us, Amy Cale, Amy Hatfield Cale, was an outstanding substitute during this first semester. She has done a great job, so keep that name in mind for future. And as always, our TIS, Regina Stewart, is one of our biggest celebrations. With the changes in the support, the technology support at the board level, she's been really able to focus on integration this year, and she really feels a lot of support from Dusty and how things are moving in a little bit different direction in that realm. So we appreciate her. I hope you never take that position away from us. There you go. You have any questions?
In your presentation, you didn't mention any needs that you have. Is there anything as a board that you can do to help address some of your needs?
You know, I always, 12 years of this, and I think the board has always asked me what our needs are.
I know there's a million.
Probably, well, probably the most important is a new building, quite honestly. We kind of bleed sometimes with our cuts in personnel. From a financial standpoint, we know those are necessary. It's difficult when you lost your secretarial position in Office B. That was very tough, but I have to credit Maria Eddy with stepping up and really being able to handle most of that, again, with some help from other staff members and from parent volunteers. But I think right now, our biggest need is that building. It is old, it is, our maintenance department does a hangout job trying to stay, you know, up with it, but I can receive 10 maintenance requests in one day, and they're just things that, we've got an old building, and it's, you know, leaking and creaking and groaning, and so that's where we are.
That's something we've discussed before, and it's something that we have to get the public on board with.
Be ready to go talk again if you want to. I appreciate your support always.
Anything else? Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Amanda Hedner, and I am, I teach eighth-grade science, but I'm also the Faculty Senate President, and I just have our presentation here for you. So our Faculty Senate funding, you can see our budget, there's, it's also in your paper too, so you don't have to turn around. I'm just trying to read all the numbers to you because there's, we are, our general fund right now is sitting with $24,000, and that's with, after, you know, the modest teacher allotment and what we carried over from last year. Our interview process for new employees, we have eight to 11 teachers. We voted on that again this year, and we have eight to 11 in the principal and Faculty Senate. Obviously, we don't have eight teachers sitting on every interview. It's, we pull, we select from that pool. But each person has their designated area, and we, depending on what the interview is. Teacher recognition programs, we have sale programs during Faculty Senate meetings through tickets. The introductory advisory lesson, each of us, each of, each teacher was kind of showcased so the kids could, and it was a game to see how many names they knew, so it was kind of fun. Also, I had seventh graders, so some of them remember from last year, but sixth graders, it's a great way for them to get a face with a name. Retirement committee, teachers and staff, we just recognize the retirees every year. And there's perfect attendance, key of excellence, which is through the Board of Education, and Teacher of the Year, and then also teachers get nominated for asset builder, which is something that students get also. Grant procurement, obviously our pro officer. Pets in the Classroom is an education grant for a fish tank, which I didn't even know we had, which was really awesome. I did a survey, and I was like, someone has, we've got a fish tank? I need to go check that out. And then other classroom materials. And then the newest one is a water bottle grant, and I didn't actually know the name of that. Do you? It's Jennifer Bennett. Started it, every student could get a water bottle, and they could get their name put on it, and then now we allow water bottles in the classroom as long as it's that specific water bottle, and it has to be water, or they could add fruit to it, no, no flavorings added, colors. It's really nice to see, and it's less, can I go get a drink? So it really does help with those interactions. Multicultural awareness school-wide, obviously our Heritage Fair, Veterans Day Assembly, which is coming up, advisory lessons, college and career readiness, and our Rachel's Challenge Multicultural activities, obviously French is a big area, which she brings in from any of the distinct ways to speak to elders and strangers opposed to friends and peers. She does French holidays, All Saints' Day, and Easter, so it's really neat to hear. And that's the intro to health, so that way the teacher can get to know the students. Music, studying and performing from different cultures and learning musical terms from other countries. Multicultural classroom activities, Spanish. They do the Day of the Dead lessons from, comparing Halloween to the Day of the Dead, along with reading stories and among other things. Science classes, and they do the moon phases in different cultures and meanings, meteorology, great family trees, rocket lessons, and then Scientist of the Month. English classes, they read novels like Devil's Arithmetic, and they read the Freedom Writer's Diary. Reading classes, they do poetry. Art classes, this is where we hit a lot of our multicultural things. And I'm not going to read all of them, obviously, but there's different, from Mexico to Japan to Africa, to Polynesian art, Mardi Gras. So they cover a lot of our multicultural. Other multicultural classroom, Social Studies and West Virginia History, as long as they're teaching their standards and their content standards, they cover all of the multicultural. And I, when my survey, they said, it's in our standards, that's what we do. And I was like, okay. So historical awareness, obviously our Veterans Day, which is coming up, Golden Horseshoe Trip and the Golden Horseshoe Test, NASA, again, the NASA trip for 7th grade. We also have the Missing Man Table, Red Fridays, everyone, remember Everyone Deployed, and we wear red on the first Monday?
First Friday.
First Friday, okay. Yes. And then Red Ribbon Week. Some of the projects in the classrooms, reading and English classes, Civil Rights Movement, Trail Tears, and then of course they do research projects. Science classes, I show October Sky, and then we build rockets. Also did Freedom, geez, the movie about the three, the four women that work at NASA, and we do that also. And then of course, this year, we did the Great Solar Eclipse, which was a huge historical thing that only comes around so long. And God, I was crazy to make them go out and watch it, but I say, we don't know when the next time it's going to come around. Historical projects, Hate Has No Home poster, the Junior Federal Duck Stamp Competition, No Dog Run, and then obviously Scientist of the Month. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I had a question. You, about the water bottle grant, do you have in your fountains, the Phil stations?
Yes.
I just hadn't noticed those.
Yes, actually, there's one in the cafeteria, there's one in the van hall, and that works out really well. So, thank you.
Question is?
Yes.
Of course, we're in the middle of an opioid wave epidemic.
Yes.
And we're all scratching our head how to solve this, but I was listening to public radio today, and they had a program from Huntington, West Virginia, so it's West Virginia-based educators thinking about this. One of the, and I want your opinion on this, I think one of the suppositions would be that kids are losing their culture. They don't have the old culture, but it seems like you've built in a lot of cultural programs here.
Yes.
If we needed to get a new identity, what would it be, or what could it be, or how can we emphasize what we already have here as our cultural identity? If that would keep people from using drugs?
I mean, we do Red Ribbon Week and we hit on a lot of that during that. And then our advisory classes, we talk about who you are and finding out who you are and what you want to be. My students, my 7th graders filled out a college application, and we discussed, you know, the things they needed to do to get to that. They also filled out a job application. And they were looking at me like, why am I doing this? Well, you have to practice eventually. And I feel like things like that, just getting, setting goals.
Okay, I think, honey, I think you're right, because we need to give them hope.
Yes.
So they don't sell themselves short.
Right.
Take drugs and stuff.
I think one of the, if I can interject for just a minute, I think one of the things that we've touched on through Amanda's presentation and some of the things that I've mentioned, probably the most important thing that we can do to help their heritage is give them connections.
Yes.
And everything that we've worked on at the middle school over the last few years has been about connections. Advisory groups where they're with the same teacher for the, all three years that they're there. Clubs where they get to meet with another teacher in a different realm. Red Ribbon Week activities, we actually did the opioid virtual field trip on one of the days of Red Ribbon Week. Just giving them opportunity to figure out who they are, because that's, you know, at the middle school, that's one of the primary focuses that we have. But to give them, help them figure that out with a nice scaffolding underneath them of connections to solid, put-together adults who are grounded in our own heritage as well. I think that's probably the key to helping kids, is giving them those connections.
I think you're right. I mean, I'll give us off that just with, we've just lost a esteemed teacher, Mrs. Packett. And my children remember her fondly, their friends remember her fondly. And she was a great connection for them. Came back to the 20th year reunion, the only teacher that did. But I mean, if that's, that's what they say impelled them forward, that individual, her effort. Okay, keep it up.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all. We will move on to the Bacchanal School LSIC report.
Before I introduce Mike Donato, if you all get a chance tonight, walk around the building and check out some of the artwork that our kids have done, not just on the windows, but some of the display cases. Also, you'll find the Elks Teens of the Month program that we've got started out there in the display case. And we are presently hosting, I believe, 11 exchange students, so their information's out there also. And then Mike Donato is going to present our LSIC report. All right, as aforementioned there, I'm Mike Donato. I teach Health and Physical Education here at the high school, also coach youth soccer here, and now add LSIC Chair to that hat of many hats. I'll go ahead and address no PowerPoint and one-page outline, so I'll be brief. So first thing I'll address is the status of achievement and goals in the five-year strategic plan. There were three goals in that five-year plan. The first one was to maintain the four-year cohort graduation rate, as measured by the West Virginia Department of Ed, of at least 90% for the 2018 four-year cohort graduation. That goal was achieved this past school year with a rate of 91.02%. Obviously above, or reached that goal, and the goal set for 2018 is still at that 90% rate. The second goal was to increase proficiency, percent proficiency in math and English language arts by 10%. By the 2018 West Virginia General Summit of Assessments, numbers from last year, the math increased by 137%. That's not a typo, that's correct, 137%. ELA increased 13%, so increases in both for this past year, so good stuff there. The Newton, since the, West Virginia had just announced their Summit of Assessment with the SATs, the goal will be reevaluated and changed to tie in with the new state test, which will be the SAT test. The third part of that five-year plan was to reduce the number of referrals to the freshman class during the school year. That's a process that's ongoing. One thing that we have done here at the high school to try and combat that was a program, a transition program that we call High School 101, which targets at-risk freshmen that were coming into the high school, to try and get them used to high school life, help them with their classes, kind of ease them into the process, with the hopes that that will reduce some of those numbers.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What types of, what were they at risk in attendance, behavior?
Yes. We use, we use Bright Bites information from the State Department, and it is, goes back to 3rd grade with attendance, grades. There's all kinds of factors into that, and we don't, we just generate the results so we can pull those up and see, like, the top 50 most at-risk kids. Discipline referrals, there's factors in a bunch of different things. So we took-
Movement, attendance, grades.
We took those 50 kids-
Movement.
And put them into two classes up here. We call it High School 101. It's basically our transition program. Hopefully, a true transition program where you're getting them ready for high school and not one at the end of the road where you're trying to save them for graduation. It's preventative, wouldn't you think, Alice?
Thank you both.
Our second thing was to encourage parent and community involvement. One thing that was mentioned earlier as the meeting started was we restarted the Elks Teen of the Month. That is a program where we, teachers nominate students and they are voted on by the faculty, and one male and one female student is selected each month. Two things that I can speak on very closely as your next two bullet points. The first one, something that we started here last year was Buccaneer Sports Network. That's something that we've seen success above and beyond of what we expected when we initially got that going at the beginning of last year. For those that are unaware, it's a podcast that we do with myself and Brent Kimball, basically bringing back the play-by-play of the sports here at the high school. So through that podcast and social media, we've reconnected, but not just businesses through sponsorships, but community members. Our Facebook page has over 1,000 followers on there, our Twitter page somewhere close to 300, between just community members, students, and everything else. So they, they really look to us for the going-ons here with the athletics here at the high school. And the best part of it is we've been able to bridge some relationships with some of the business members here through sponsorships and everything else, and get people that have maybe not been involved in the high school for the past few years back involved through sponsorship and active engagement. So that's kind of been that bridge to reconnect some of those sour relationships. Second thing I can talk on greatly is some, a collaboration project that we're doing with the Journalism Department, Faculty Senate, and our enrichment program here at the high school. What we're doing with that is, when we had our initial LSIC meeting, one of the issues and concerns that our community members that were in attendance shared was, there was a sort of disconnected communication between the school and the community, that there was something, there was something missing to where the good things that we have going on here are just getting lost, they're not getting spread to the people that want to know. So through our enrichment program and the Journalism Department, what we've done is decided to kind of bring back a version of BU News, where through, helped through Faculty Senate and enrichment, we're in the process of trying to put together some student-produced news pieces about things going on here, things going on in classrooms, some of that sort of positive PR, you can look at it if you will. And also, Micrologic has been working with that as, with us, with that as well. So that'll be something hopefully that gets off the ground when we get off, back from Christmas break. Still in the process of getting that worked out. Project Graduation is one of the biggest things that we do here for parent and community involvement. It's something where staff members, parents, and community members produce a drug and alcohol-free celebration of graduation. We host ACT prep courses here at the high school for community preparation classes for the ACT test. And of course, one thing we do later on in the year is our 8th grade night, where we have the 8th graders come up, our new prospective students, and parents can come meet teachers, take a tour of the school. Our student council leads those tours and get an opportunity just to meet the administration, teachers, and just kind of figure out where things are. For school volunteer programs and mentorship, one of the big things we have for that is our Youth and Government Program. Our Chair for that is here tonight, Mr. Brent Kimball. Our Youth and Government Club is the largest delegation in the state of West Virginia. They're currently working on 15 different service projects, including work with the parish house, Holbrooks on the Hill, Bacchanal Academy, and other things going on here at the high school as well. We have several members of our CTE program here tonight. One of the biggest things that we've started here in the past few years is Simulated Workplace. What CTE does is offering different classes using a simulated workplace model. If you notice, the boards there in the back, close-up the old projector room, has now turned into our school store, which Mr. Keith Nichols has kind of taken over that program. That should be off, up and running very shortly. We have our business program that is run through, I believe, Mrs. Dean, who's here tonight as well. Something else we have going on through her is internships with different parts of the community. I know that Arnett Carvis-Toothman is hosting a couple of students that are to intern there every other day for one of their blocks to get some real world, real-world experience in the world of accounting and business. Our FFA is in the process of working with Mr. Vincent, our LSIC, in some school beautification projects around the school with some of the landscaping going on the outside. Several of our clubs and organizations have began their, we've had one blood drive here at the school already, that our Red Cross Club has organized, and several of our clubs have started their canned food drives for the holiday season. Our Friends of Rachel Club here at the high school has done work with different elementary schools throughout the county, most notably for our Countywide Field Day that takes place here at the high school in May. For waivers submitted, we don't have any. And for a productive, safe-in-school environment, our Prevention Resource Officer Rocky Head is a great tool for us here. And probably, people think they see Leo's Officer at the high school, they just think here to kind of arrest students or do whatever. That's, we don't view that as his primary purpose here. I know through health classes, I've used him as a great resource to come in and use him as an education tool, to come in when I'm doing things on drugs, alcohol, violence prevention, things that he deals with on a day-to-day basis outside of the school. He's a great resource to have come in and talk to the students, because he's, he's got the real boots on the ground experience to talk to the kids about that. So he's great to have as an educational tool. He's great to just have, come in with the classes and just pop his head in and say hi. You know, it's just, it's, he's a great tool to have here. Starting in January, he'll be bringing a new K-9 officer in, Brock. He'll be here roping out, roaming the halls here at the high school starting in January. We've had several upgrades to our security system here at the high school, most notably our security cameras. How many, I know you told me the number, I just forgot how many it was, like 12, 13? 14 new cameras that were installed here at the high school, most, in some notable places around the school. We've had several emergency drills already this year. When evaluated on those, we receive, we've received high remarks on those drills, and also making sure we're working with local law enforcement to get copies of our emergency plans. One program we use here for our sign-in system is the Raptor Technologies Program. That screens our visitors and also students who arrive late to school, also logs our visitors in and out, so we can track who's in and out of the building for our visitors. Several of our, so all of our staff here has received actor shooter training, new teachers, and a refresher course will be offered shortly. We've also had several administration staff members receive safety care training with emphasis on de-escalation and restraint of students when the need arises. Then of course, our advisory program during our care period has offered several lessons on bullying prevention and awareness, suicide prevention, and things of that sort.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So for the BU News, will it be a social media presence like the Sports Network? Is that, you think it's going to be like that?
The way, the way it's going to be working now is that Micrologic is setting up a private secure channel for us, that would be outside of social media. So essentially, as opposed to say, like, on Channel 3 like it used to be, we're catching up with the way technology is now. So we're, Micrologic has offered to set up a private, secure network for us that is something much safer than, say, like, just putting stuff on YouTube. You know, so it's outside of social media, there's really only limited people that can access it, but it's a way, but it's still be accessible to the community, to where we can get that information out there, to where, say, if we put together a news piece about what's going on, say, in a classroom where we've had a guest speaker here, or whatever it is, we can get that out to community members, you know, it's a safe place for them to access. There's no social media recourse, there's no, say, like, comments page, anything along those lines, access to which would be limited as far as from the administrative side, but still putting it out there. Because again, it's a concern that we needed to address, because of our community members, and that several community members at our LSIC meeting, that's just the biggest concern, is like, I'll just quote directly, we still know what's going on. And that, and when we talked about that afterwards, we said, that's a problem. We need, we need to do something about that. They need to hear about some of the good things that go on here, not just, you know, bad. So we view this as a way, use it with Helpless Cheryl in the Journalism Department and the experience that I've had, and not just in podcasting, but in my previous life, previous life that I've had in broadcasting and everything else, and working with media. And the technology side of things, we've got a handful of students interested through the enrichment program that have already been working with me and helping with projects on our podcast that have taken an interest that, once we get the ball rolling with this, that have really kind of taken a shine to it. And just on a personal note, it was something that I really enjoyed in high school and loved. That's why I've kind of taken on this project a little bit, just because working on our TV station and whatnot, when I was in my time in high school, was what kept me interested and engaged. And I know there's kids out there like me that just, for lack of a better word, love to the around stuff. So I think this would be a great opportunity for them to just kind of, and like I said, it got me interested in a career in broadcasting, which I pan out with, but still, it got me interested in it. So, yeah. So it's a great, it's something very exciting, and like I said, Micrologic is going to be helping us out with that.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Just thinking about avenues of communication, the newspapers are here. Students used to have a article, it was on the opinion page, almost every Wednesday there would be something from one high school student to another. I always read it, but I mean, it seemed like that would be something that would, students could aspire to, and have something in the newspaper every week.
That's something we had discussed as well in our LSIC meeting, too. And so, I'll be honest, it's something I didn't know, so, but-
Just thinking about avenues of communication, the newspapers are here. Students used to have a article, it was on the opinion page, almost every Wednesday there would be something from one high school student to another. I always read it, but I mean, it seemed like that would be something that would, students could aspire to and have something in the newspaper every week.
That's something we had discussed as well in our LSIC meeting too. And so I'll be honest, it's something I didn't know. But our children are the teachers here and I'm sure she's made note of that.
It may have started two years ago, five years ago, but it was there for a long time.
Buccaneer Beach?
Yeah, Buccaneer Beach. That was, yeah. It was well-read. The other, the other thought is we have the TV station here. They film a lot of, you know, city hall and county commission and school board. It's an educational channel, free access channel. I mean, you said you have social media and that's, that may supersede local TV, but I mean, it seems like that would be an avenue also.
It's something, I believe that when we met with, with Micrologic, I believe that was something that was also discussed. And I just think, honestly, just from personal experience in dealing with our podcast and the success we've had with it, we see the potential more in with just using internet as opposed to going that route just because that's just the way, that's just the way the world's going. Like, I mean, if, if we're talking about just say with, you know, Channel 3 or whatever, like I don't even get that at my house, you know, I don't, I don't have cable, I don't sell, and that's the way, kids especially are going anymore. It's, everything is online. So if we're going to want to connect with media or connect with the community and get student engagement in that, it's something that we as a school have got to kind of go with at times and that. And we feel that that's, just from the legacy of the two years of that I've got on a podcast and the success that we've had in two years, it's the way the world's going.
Obviously they'll watch my show, but anyway.
I'll be honest, I'm not, not once.
Thirty-nine years I've been waiting for you to watch. But anyway, the show, the show also has picked up on YouTube. So I mean, it's watch Channel 3, you know, some of these thinking people, but then the YouTube is, is that higher level of access.
And we discussed the YouTube route with that because it's something that we could have just done ourselves. We could have just put it together and put it out there, but we wanted, we wanted it to be something safe, something safe for our students to use, something safe for community to, to access. And we didn't, for lack of a better word, we didn't want to leave it prone to negativity. And, and you know, I'm, I'm, I'm on social media and I see things that get posted on there all the time. And it's just something that we didn't think would be fair to our students and fair to the school. We wanted this to be a positive PR arm to where if, if we're going to put ourselves as staff members and put our students out there to do something really creative and fun, that we wanted it to be something that could be not just accessible, but safe. And we feel that, and Micrologic and Butch is really going to take care of us in that regard. And he's, and like I said, he's more than happy to do it and this is something he's doing as a donation for us. He's not asking any money, any time. It's going to be his time and his people putting it together, showing us how it works. We load the material and then it's up there, ready to go. So and he's just as excited about it as we are, so.
It's commendable, what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
The increase in math proficiency is outstanding. And I want to know if there's anything that you can attribute to why we had such a significant increase and if there's something that we can share with the rest of the schools and the community.
We took, with our PLCs, we took a big emphasis on increasing those scores. So we looked at PLCs particularly last year of ways that we can collaborate and incorporate math skills and ELA skills into all disciplines. So I remember sitting in a PLC with us and Health and Defense and Driver Zed, it's like, okay, what can we do to, you know, like, you know, simulated, not just simulated questions, but ways to incorporate, to show that there's math skills used in what we do. So we, we took a couple PLC days and we, we took one day where we collaborated with different math and English teachers and then we took another PLC day where we just were interdepartmental. And we took the ideas from, basically the math and English people told us what they need and gave us resources and ideas and then we took it as a department and ran with it. Did that have something to do with it? It didn't hurt. So I can't say I actually have that in a backup that says that worked, but you know.
We changed where we thought we'd give the test.
That was the biggest thing I'd say as well is that it was.
We used to give tests in the gym and in here and it's very hard to do with hundreds of kids trying to take a test. So we, we made it small group in the classrooms and I think that was the other thing that contributed to that. Even though that, you know, that percentage sounds nice, our test scores still aren't where they need to be. But it was, the same group of kids from one year to the next did dramatically improve for, I think those two reasons. I think they took it more seriously also. And then I think the teacher in the classroom is a big factor and then the preparation that our math and English people did was, was really phenomenal and I can't give them enough credit because all year long they worked at skills to help the test-taking. And I think that sent the message to the kids that it's a serious thing. And, because I can tell you before, a lot of times it was blown off, it's not being important. And it is important because that's, that's, you know, we, we look, we look at those scores and we know that we're better than what our test scores have shown. And that's, that's something that, the attitude of taking that test is a major factor there.
That was the biggest thing we had to change, was just the general attitude to the test. And I think that's something we've done, so.
And I've, I've asked every school this from all these, what can we do, what, what issues do you have here that we can as a board?
Just your continued support. And like I said, the thing, but when we come up with these projects and ideas like this thing that I, that we want to do with this, this BU News and Journalism and with Sports Network and just these, these out-of-the-box ideas that we come up with, just make sure that, you know, we've got everything on the up and up and we've got your support on that because, you know, it's things that, you know, we're going to invest a lot of time and passion into and just want to make sure that we've got your all's support in that. And that, that's honestly the biggest thing, is just knowing that if we're going to put ourselves out there and make ourselves vulnerable a little bit, knowing that we've got support from, you know, county office and the board members, that, just knowing that helps a lot. It really does, knowing that just someone's got your back. So as long as we've got your all's support in regards to these ideas that we have, that's, that's big.
I think we're also very lucky in Upshur County and I don't know, I think if you talk to people outside of our county, like I've ran into administrators and former teachers that we have here now that are in the building, I think sometimes we don't realize how fortunate we've been here with some of the things that we have. We take, even our students take it for granted, some of the things, the facility that we have and the technology that we have and some of the things that we have access to that other places have not had. And I, you know, you, the more people you talk to about it, the more you realize that. We have a, a teacher that just joined us from Elkins and is amazed, you know, that some of the things that Upshur County has that Randolph County does not have.
We have a very giving community.
We do. And the levy, the community, everything about that, I mean, you look out with the athletic facilities and then the building itself, we, hosting tournaments like volleyball tournament, I had five to six people telling me how nice the building is inside. And, you know, you walk, you don't really, you don't really think about that every day, but people that come from outside in realizing how old the building is and how really, how nice it still is inside and some of the upgrades that we're going to do outside, I think are going to, going to help that.
And we, we've hosted a north-south game here a few times for soccer and those coaches come in and they say, this is nicer than what you see most like Division II, Division III colleges. As far as our, our facilities go with that, I remember, yeah, so very, so like I said, it's mostly your support.
As far as Officer Buck and the upgrade of the security cameras, were we able to do that through a grant?
I can speak to that. The school funds were used for the majority of the camera. We were able to go with a local vendor that we've got a very good, we've got, worked with Mr. Carver and we were able to get multiple bids and a local vendor was able to do the installation setup. And it's, it's a system that is expandable. We, we had, we now have two systems, the, the one that existed prior to this and this new one. The new system only has 14 cameras on it at this point, but it's expandable up to 64. And the quote that came from them was, was very affordable compared to some of the companies larger, with larger systems. But the, we, the majority of the funding came from school funds with some support from the central office too. So again, it's that support, it's that working together that's making it happen.
I remember talking a year or two ago about the cameras, there was a significant cost to redo the cameras.
Because they were wanting to be able to reach the parking lot, I mean, is that feasible now?
Well, Randall worked it out with this company that ended up being a lot more affordable than we originally had thought.
Right.
And we do have, we have new cameras from the stadium out in the parking lot, from the tower out into the parking lot, from the building, again to the parking lot, from the fieldhouse up toward the school. And then we have new cameras in the gymnasiums, both gymnasiums. Back here in the auditorium, this, this room is now surveilled and it had not been prior to this, so.
And the quality is amazing.
And it's, it's a digital system and very, very clear pictures.
Courtyard.
And a courtyard from under the school. So, and, and again, we, we hope to be able to expand it even further and replace some of the older cameras that are in the, in the hallway, comment areas and things like that that need, need upgraded eventually.
What about theater?
As far as Officer Buck.
Oh yeah, Intercom will be the next one.
Intercom is one we're going to need help with. Our Intercom has been dying. We have band-aided it, it's working. The bells are working and they can currently hear the bells in all locations. The system is approximately 25 to 30 years old. We have put in several old new parts that we've been able to find, but we know we got our bids and turned in the lead clutter and working on that. And hopefully this year, we're hoping to be able to get in, get a new system put in that will allow us to utilize the existing wiring and speakers and bullhorns and things will only have to change in the front office, the heads so to speak, and take care of that and bring us up to speed and be in a much better situation. The new camera system that Mr. Boyd talked about also is over, over IT and Internet. So security-wise, law enforcement will be able to come up, hit the cameras, sit in the cruiser, see the whole building. We get a phone call at night about the building, we can pull up on our phone, check, see what's going on before we even walk out of our house and see what's going on here. So the new system is, has a tremendous ability. As I said, the, the picture is crystal clear and it's, it's basically a plug-and-play. We just need to put the new cameras, we'll have to change the wiring because the old wiring is the Cat 5 or the.
Coax.
Coax, thank you, the Coax, the TV Coax cable will have to run a Cat 5, Cat 6 cord, but that's it. And then just plug the cameras in and they, they install and go. So the Micrologic took care of that and we've got an excellent system that's going to be able to handle. Right now, everything that we have could be replaced and put onto the new system. And the new system can handle.
Anything else?
I'll just thank Bobby Gompers since he's here, he came to our LSIC meeting. What's up Bobby? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much. UHS Faculty Senate?
You have to bear with me, as Mike was mentioning, he and I are not used to addressing large groups of people, talking about sporting events and stuff. So you have to bear with me through this. First thing I would be remiss to say is thank you to the faculty and staff here at BU High School. As you can see, most of the people in this room are BUHS faculty and staff and I genuinely appreciate their being here in support of the LSIC and the Faculty Senate as well as the fact is it shows the Board of Education how seriously we take our jobs. And so again, thank you to them. Things I have to address, as I've done this for years now, first off is our budget report. In regards to our budget, you can see we have $36,657 in our encumbered account, we have $11,726 in our general fund, unencumbered and for a grand total of $48,376.67. Faculty Senate over the course of the last year has been very giving. We have given $5,000 to Career Technical Education for Mr. Nichols' school store. We gave $1,000 for a new sound system in the gymnasium. We bought a new sound mixer for this room. We've purchased all kinds of things just for the bettering of the school because we feel as a Faculty Senate, if we take pride in our school, therefore the students will as well. We appreciate the board's support as well. Again, it just helps the situation now. Hiring process, under policy 5000, BUHS Faculty Senate votes every semester on our option. BUHS decides to go with the single designee option, which allows Mrs. Angie Westfall, who is our single designee again for this year, she has the opportunity to select two people that are on the certified interview E-list. You guys can see every member or every department is represented by the certified interview team. So typically, Mrs. Westfall will choose two teachers that represent good teaching standards, typically content-based as well, just overall great teaching to select our new faculty members. Teacher-student recognition, pretty self-explanatory. First off, I'd be remiss and she's in the room tonight, I thought I was going to talk about her. BUHS Faculty Senate and LSIC, we're very, very proud to recognize the 2017 Teacher of the Year for the high school, Ms. Tappan Squires. And again, I've known Tapp for 12 years, you couldn't ask for a better individual, a more gracious teacher and all-around great friend. And so again, couldn't go to a better person than Tappan Squires. We've also had numerous applicants. Faculty Senate promotes the Arch Coal Awards. In fact, this year we were really, really happy with the fact that our veteran Jeremiah Smallbridge received the Arch Coal Achievement and Teaching Award here at the high school. And so again, great teachers doing great things here at BUHS. Every year, at the end of the year, we recognize retirees. This past year, we recognized Maureen Rhodes who had worked 19 years here at the high school. And so the Faculty Senate always likes to recognize her. And also in honor of, of late Walt Crossitt, we also promote a good commertery and a nice roasting for all of our faculty members just as, as a parting gift, just kind of as a way to say that we love you and good luck in, in retired life. Also, as Mr. Donato talked about, in collaboration with the Elks Club, we have brought back the BUHS Elks Team of the Month. And so again, in the last two months, we've recognized four high school students, Jenna Marple and Sean Kreitz in the month of September and Desi Lindo and Ben Nolte in the month of October. Right now, Mrs. Westfall sent out the email there just a couple of weeks ago, we are in the process of voting for our November Elks Team of the Month and that announcement will be on December 1st, who those teams are representing. Grant work, as you can see, there's a bunch. First off, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mrs. Angie Westfall for all the stuff that she does in regards to grant work as our school library media specialist. She helped the Science Department with a Society for Science and Public Community grant with sponsorship by Regeneron for BUHS to receive periodical science news. So our kids have the most up-to-date news, information lab techniques in the world of science. She also received a $2,000 grant from the Dollar General Corporation in regards to use for improvements in the library. As Mr. Vincent said, walking around the building and see, I would strongly encourage you to walk past the library. It looks amazing, it's absolutely amazing what Mrs. Westfall has done over the course of the last four years. Moving on grant-wise, the FFA Club, again, can't say enough great things about Allison Lewis and Joe Himes. They've just received a $3,000 Living to Serve grant targeting low-income individuals that helps provide training and sustainability. Mr. Himes and Ms. Lewis also recently received a grant where they became case certified, was able to attend a conference in Kentucky and again, certified in agricultural sciences and education. It also allowed them to purchase $3,000 in science equipment for our agricultural education department here at the high school. Warehouser, again, you guys were talking earlier about how giving this community is. Warehouser has been incredible. I know Mr. Nichols has applied or in the process of applying for a community grant for Warehouser in regards to the school store and continuing the operating costs of that. I know that Warehouser has also given the high school grants, or the high school band grants in order to maintain band uniforms, help with instrument repairs and purchases. Again, Warehouser's a very, very valuable community member. Project Graduation, recently applied and is awaiting acknowledgement of the Walmart Community Grant for Project Graduation. Last year's Project Graduation cost in the tune of $23,000. And so currently our Project Graduation Committee is working diligently at raising funds for this year. As a person not from Upshur County, for those of you that have never been to Project Graduation, it's an incredible experience. The fact that we have the opportunity to celebrate with our kids in a drug and alcohol-free environment is incredible and I would strongly encourage you, if you've never been, make a point to come up after graduation this year. It's a great experience to see and celebrate with our graduates. Buccaneer Rotary Club also was very generous in donating $500 for Red Ribbon Week essay contest winners for both BUHS and BUMS. Talked about Mr. Nichols in the, in the Buccaneer Zone. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that BUHS is still working with Glymbel State on the PDS program. Mrs. Terry Sisk is our PDS representative, she received a $1,000 grant. Mrs. Terry Sisk is our PDS representative, she received a $1,000 grant last year in the December meeting, I told you guys about it last year. She just found out in email yesterday that the PDS grant is going to be approved for another $1,000 this year. So, we are receiving another $1,000 for the PDS grant to place a special education teacher here after-school, during after-school tutoring sessions, basically to add help for our special needs students. Also, and I'd be remiss, Mr. Donato talked about this as well, BUHS Faculty Senate is incredibly appreciative of the continued board support of the PRO foster program. Rocky Heb is, single-handedly, one of the most important people to this building. I die every time we go into a pep rally, and Rocky gets the biggest applause as anyone. He is more popular than just about anyone in this building, and I believe that the emergence of Buck will only make him even that much more popular, and, again, help us in a school safe environment. Multicultural community historical awareness, there's a bunch. Associate classes here at BUHS just recently finished the Adopted Veteran Program, where kids in social studies classes interviewed veterans from previous porn conflicts, researched family members that served in all wars, basically to get an acknowledgement of some of the hardships that they faced in their storeroirs. Again, this actually used to be a lot harder of a project, now with the fact that so many of our veterans are home and needing support and stuff, they're always willing to help us out and talk about that, and so that was a great experience for our social studies kids. BUHS was visited by Mark Twain in October, probably one of the best experiences, was he walked into the office and Ms. Elbin was working the front desk, and she goes, "Well, who are you?" And he says, "Mark Twain," and she goes, "Do you have ID?" And didn't realize that, you know, apparently, he's back, so Mark Twain was here, again, great experience. Can't say enough great things about the collaboration that Mrs. Westfall works with West Virginia and Westland College and the Upshur County Public Library at bringing people like that in. A big announcement that Mrs. Westfall let me know that I could talk about tonight as well, is that she has also arranged on April 6th, Abraham Lincoln will be reemerging here at the high school, and I joke with Mrs. Westfall, I'm glad you got him before the 14th, because we understand bad things happen on April 14th, especially in theaters. So, again, it's one of those situations that you have to learn and deal with. In regards to other multicultural community historical awareness, BU Band, as always, been very busy. They performed at six football games this year. They have been very, very busy with various band spectacles and competitions around North, Central, West Virginia. Just about every Saturday, I know Garrett has taken the band around, he's been in Morgantown, he's been in Fairmont, Martian Forest Festival, of course, these veterans, they've raved there. Last weekend, I'm getting ready for Christmas season. Thursday night, 7:00 PM, here in the high school, is the Band Review Concert, where he will be doing a variety of show tunes, including some of the songs from this year's halftime performances, as well as honoring veterans with songs from All Service Academy. So, if you're free Thursday night, 7:00 PM, please come out and support Mr. Friend and the BU Band. Senior class at BUHS, as well as the Youth Leadership Association and Student Council, participated in a great community activity last week, when Senator Shelley Moore Capito was here at the high school to talk about the $3 million federal block grant that Upshur County received for greater broadband access. I know that some of the board members were here at that experience. I thought it was great, anytime you can have a sitting senator inside your building, willing to talk to kids about everything from technology to life as a politician, to what it meant growing up in West Virginia, that is a great experience. I think the coolest part, at the very end of the ceremony, there's a roomful of adults and there's a roomful of kids, and she says, "I'll answer any questions from any of the kids." And so, she opened it up there and allowed the kids to ask questions, which, again, was a great, great experience in that regard. Visual Arts Department, again, can't say enough great things. Mr. Vincent talked to you earlier, if you walk around the building, you will see winter landscapes on just about every single open pane window in the building, as well as finishing up Day of the Dead units, comparing and contrasting things like Halloween and All Hallows Eve. Also, with collaboration with the library, some of the arts kids have been actually making drawings and landscapes that Mark Twain has fallen in love so much with, that he is now using them on his tour around the area, that he's using them to demonstrate some of the things that he experiences. Fringe Rachel Club is really our center of multicultural education. They just completed a food drive for the parish house, and was recognized, recognized all fall sports and extracurricular activity members by decorating their lockers. Again, just makes kids feel like they're involved and part of. Big thing close to my heart, as Mr. Donato talked about, is the YLA. YLA, we have 90 members this year, 85 of which will be representing us in the 61st West Virginia Youth and Government Conference. Great experience. Mr. Vincent, we took him down last year as one of our advisors, and the chance to see our kids sitting in the seats of the senate and the legislature, doing the government's work in some cases better than the government actually does, is a great, great experience. And like I said, I genuinely appreciate the opportunity for that. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the relationship with West Virginia and Westland College, and the state executive read-aloud, state read-aloud program executive director, people like Leanne Brown and Mary Kay Vaughn, who is coming into our schools, helping train our early childhood education students, our parenting kids about the read-al program, and helps of developing better literacy skills for future generations, which, again, you can't say enough great things about that. Cody Cutwright, Pro Start, doing a great job as well. He is in simulated workplaces, getting ready to start with his Cafe Blue, which will be a sandwich shop, soup shop, for staff members here at the high school, a chance to basically get the opportunity to choose finer selections than what our school cafeteria offers, which, again, we're looking forward to that. I'm not sure that my stomach can handle that, but, again, working on my ABH, I'll have to work on that out with Coach Donato in regards to helping fitness. Good news from BUHS, and the thing I can't say enough, Mrs. Kane and Mr. Donato have talked with me about, is the fact is, we need to put more of a focus on what good things are happening at BU. And so, just a few of these that I'd like to pay attention to. Last week was our annual talent show, and the chance to see what our kids can do, what they're capable of. I was here for just a little bit of it, and the fact is, our kids are more talented, they have more talent than I could ever dream of. And so, again, just a great experience for that. Mrs. B. Burnside, who is usually at this event, but is not here tonight, has one of the most innovative science curriculums I've ever seen. She has brought into the classroom breakout boxes, which is based off the escape room fads that are popping up all around West Virginia, where kids have to solve puzzles using analytical thinking and problem-solving thinking to basically figure out a way into a box to figure out what's on the inside. The kids love it, and, again, she's doing a great job with that. BUHS was actually recognized, Mr. Donato talked about this as well, with a 90.58% graduation rate last year. We've already got the statistic for this year, we are at 91.02 with Class 2017. So, again, definitely going in the right direction. Mr. Himes and Ms. Lewis talked about the FFA Innovations Team that won the Natural Resources Division last week, they were competing this week for their PDS Broadhead Project, and hopefully, the team of Ivy Ward, Nathaniel Bailey, Nicole Bailey, and Colt Andreg will win that competition so that they can have the opportunity to build a prototype, which is an amazing experience. Fall sports wrapped up just here recently, football team, cross-country teams, boys and girls soccer team had a great year, and we're getting ready to amp up there for the winter sports season. BSN, Donato talked about it there as well, 26,000 devices tuned in to over 100 broadcasts last year. We had football game averages over, between 1300 and 1400 devices every game. For boys and girls basketball, we averaged between 300 and 400 devices a game. The craziest one, I think, due to issues with the SSAC, we couldn't broadcast the state championship game in Charleston, we could only go down and do a pregame and a postgame show. For the 20-minute pregame show prior to the state championship game, we had over 400 devices tune in just for 20 minutes. And so, again, just a great experience, a great ability to connect back to the community. Very, very pleased with our facilities. If it was still light out, you could see that as of right now, the playing surface at Your Red Kreitz is being replaced, and we are very appreciative of the support there from the Board of Education. Academic areas, the auditorium, still, again, just doing great things there. And, again, our kids have one of the best facilities to participate in 21st Century Learn. Career Technical doing a great job, you can talk about Dig Women, you can talk about publishing, web page design, VCA, which all are implementing simulated workplaces and some of the things that they're doing there. And last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Jeremiah Smallridge. We are very fortunate to have him as our vocal and choral arts program. The BU Sound Waves is one of the top vocal performance groups in the area. In fact, the big news there that he just told me today is that he was chosen to, they were chosen to perform at the First Lady's Festival of Songs here in the coming month. So, again, just a great experience there for our choral programs. That was 10, 15 minutes of what's going on at BUHS. I know Dr. Sample's always jokes about how fast I talk, this year's no different, and any questions from you guys?
I applaud your work, and maybe I'm just trying to urge you on to something else, even better. Jim Nor, who's up on the wall there, started Buccaneer Community Theater, and they have a contest, it's over for this year, but it was to create one-act plays that will be performed in the community. And we've been blessed to travel to different countries, and one of the things that I've observed is that the places that we enjoy the most have a cultural show. And it sounds very ripe to have a song and dance cultural show, costumes and everything.
Correct.
And it would be, I mean, our future's gonna be tourism and other things like this, it would be a real plus for our students, if they produced something like that and acted in it.
I think the thing that shocks me the most, and this is even hard for me in year 12, is, growing up, I was the type of kid that we loaded up in the station wagon and we drove all over the place, and so, culture and history education was always something that was second nature to me. Through some of the components and things that I do in my classroom, I'm shocked when I hear kids say, you know, "I've never been outside of West Virginia, I've never, I've never seen what else is out there." And so, one of the things that I value as a teacher, and I know that the staff at the high school does as well, is that our kids don't have the opportunities to see what's out in the world, figure out ways to bring the world into them. And, again, as an educator, that's what I try to do every day.
I love the Youth and Government program. I remember when I was there, we had a filibuster in the senate.
You did. You did. Now, what's interesting about Youth and Government is when we started, Julie Conley started YG years ago, and I remember, first year she took me, she said, "Okay, listen, it's great, 22 kids a weekend in Charleston." I'm like, "This doesn't sound great." Went and enjoyed it so much, she goes, "Do you love it?" I'm like, "Ah, I'm in, I love it, we're good for next year." And she goes, "Good, I'm retiring." And so, again, that was the old switcheroo there, and so, that year, we took 22. This year, we're at 85 that have pledged to go to YG, we have over 90 in the club, which is just a great, great thing. I also appreciate the board's continued support on allowing us to do that. I know a lot of counties are shocked every year when you, when I say, "Oh yeah, we're bringing those kids down," they're like, "How do you..." And I'm like, "I have the greatest Board of Education that's willing to help me out in any way she can."
I always wished I started earlier, I only did it my senior year.
Yeah. Good news this year, of our 85 that are going, 47 of them are freshmen or sophomores, so we are a very young group, which will only continue to cause us to grow.
Can I mention something?
Yes.
I know Brent had it in his report, but I'm proud to announce that Jeremiah Smallridge and the Theater Department are going to be collaborating with Lewis County High School to present Phantom of the Opera. And both schools have almost an equal amount of representative performers, and it's a huge production, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that. And one other thing is, talk about Rocky Heb. I was asked to go to French Creek School, they're having Career Day for the little ones, and I walked into the kindergarten to talk about, they wanted to know what a superintendent does. And then they told me Rocky Heb had just been here. And I'm like, "That's not fair." I cannot follow Rocky Heb, and I think I took five minutes, he probably took a half hour.
The best part about Rocky, though, and just have a conversation with the kids about it, is you ask kids about respect, and who they respect as an authority. And I know in today's day and age, law enforcement has a Rocky relationship in some of those cases, and across the board at the high school, you ask kids who they respect, and one of the very first names that always comes to the surface is Rocky Heb. Again, I, if I ever got to the point where I heard that Rocky was leaving, or that the PRO program was leaving, I would be begging and pleading for his situation, he's very, very valuable to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, we'll continue with the agenda, item eight, unfinished business.
I was gonna mention about the stadium, but you already know when it started. Started yesterday in the morning. Been working late, too.
Mr. Reynolds said he would leave the lights on, you could drop by if you wanted.
Look at it, afterwards, all the lights have just moved on for the, look at it, they got it down to about their 15-yard line, that's all they got left to take off. The cyclazor tomorrow.
Time frame was, I mean, what, time frame, like two weeks?
This group will be done this week, and then they'll take Thanksgiving week off, and then the next week we'll start laying the carpet, as soon as it's, you know, weather to be, yeah. But it has to be above 45 degrees by then, start that.
Maybe a little.
Next item on the agenda are financials. You have Attachment B, payment of bills, Attachment C, budgetary items. You also have financial statements as September 30th, and we have a discussion of FY17 and audit of financials. Get some extra documents there for Mr. Carver.
I cannot have to yell. There's a number of budget supplements that we're going to approve, this is kind of the year that we've just cut up, we have a lot of old grants, we need the budgets established for, a lot of the Fred Everly's CPD grants, still working on, I'm not sure CPD grants, all that, and other ground, because hopefully for the next agenda. As far as the September Treasuries Report, we're running a little bit behind the year date for last year's data revenue, but I think that's just a timing difference, we catch up with that by, and then October's tax check is actually a lot better than last year, but then we got the numbers the other day, and that was worse than last year, so it's just a little timing going on. As far as expenditures here today, what I'm about to say was last year on non-salary-related, of course, we cut back last year, so I wouldn't expect that to go down a whole lot. But salary-related went down $527,000 against September from last year, and I expect that to continue because of the statistics and issues. Any questions about that, I'll move on to the audit report, or the audit of the financial statements. Back in September, I presented the basic statements to you without all the notes. The Washington Department of Education gives us a template that we use to do these financial statements. If you look at Weavis and all the individual financial transactions that we have, I can estimate one time we have, we generate in two weeks about a million dollars in account of every year, the payroll and all the bills that we pay and all these things. And this is consolidated down into a very summarized report. We had to have the statements done and published in the newspaper by September 29th, and that is 60 days after the end of the fiscal year. I sent all this to the auditor, he's supposed to start his field work in December, and we have to have the audit report done by the end of March, so we're probably meeting that deadline. Couple years, notice on the front page of the audit for the financial statements, it talks about GASB statement 34, that was instituted certain years ago, which made school systems follow GAAP accounting, and made it subject to GASB rules, which is the government accounting standard for it. Another thing that's in here a lot, mentioned a lot of part of it, is GASB 68, which has to do with current pensions. I think we talked last year about how we have to report liability on our books for unfunded, our unfunded portion of the state's pension program, which, compared to other states, is not that that off, really, but it says that it's about 60 to 70% funded. There are other states that are having trouble meeting their obligations to cover retirees, and West Virginia's one of them. And West Virginia is one of them, and shape and other states. To talk about the structure of the report a little bit, there's a section of that that I encourage you to read. It's the first nine pages. It's called the Management Discussion and Analysis. It takes this year's numbers, if that's comparisons to prior years, and give you a little bit of description on why the numbers changed from this year to the last year. There's some information about the different statements that are in the report. Then the next major section is the financial statements themselves. There are four basic statements included. There was some supplemental information. There's a statement on deposition and a statement about PIBs. Those are GAAP-based financial statements that in theory you can compare to any other organization that produces statements on GAAP basis. See how we can compare to those. Then there are governmental, governmental funds balance sheet and statement of revenues extended to this fund basis. And that's kind of how the state looks at us when they look at our management situation. There was one page handout that did it separate. This was set up by the Office of School Finance last week. It was presented to the State Board. It is a summary of all the reports for all 55 counties. And it gives you the unrestricted fund balance for each county. And as you noticed on the last page, we are second to last in the state because we have two counties that still have a negative fund balance. We made a very prudent progress last year, but we still have to watch ourselves and make sure we get that positive number this year. One reason is they have that asterisk on there because we're within what's called a casual deficit. And it's lost 3%, but we've had it for several years now, so that makes it prime. So, we're on the watch list. And every month I get a listing of variances in our budget that I have to explain to the Office of School Finance. So, I have to go in and report, and this is the first year in a row that we've been on the watch list. So, I'm hoping to get off of that soon because that's a lot of extra work. In a way, it's good because of course you can look at things in a different manner than I looked at before. And it does help to stay on topic and make sure we're on schedule.
Now, when will they look at that report again?
When they do June 30, 2018, then next year at this time, because we have to do this once a year.
And you think we can turn that around in this year?
I'm hopeful. It depends on a couple of factors. One of the big things that helped us improve was that, part of what got us into our problem was the deduction of Medicaid revenue. Switching from the fee-for-service to the cost-settlement approach. Well, we did our cost settlement for FY '16, and we got $300,000 for '16 that we were able to pull in. And that's the big reason that that improved. Getting ready to start on the cost of quarter '17, the fee-for-service goal does not reflect what we did in cost of service. So, hopefully we'll get another, it won't be $300,000, but it will be significant that we can put towards that. Because it's not in the budget, what we have is what we're reflecting in the current year coming in fee-for-service for the current year's activities. We don't have anything in budget for that from last year's myself. So, hopefully when we get that, we'll put that in there, put it into fund balance and not put it in the current budget as expenditures. Now, we've also built into our budget $100,000, well, we had a $100,000 negative fund balance to start with. That should allow, say, with that budget, should be against zero.
Are we not growing students? We have some extra students this year.
Actually, our enrollment went down.
Did it, okay.
We were, fortunately, we picked up some pre-K kids.
Okay, still went down.
But even with that, we, we still, we've got that a lot more.
Right, right.
Hopefully, when the pipeline construction starts and all those kinds of things replaces, I think a lot of those people that were here before, when others were gone, if they left, took the kids with them.
We should see some activity starting in January, I believe.
I think we're seeing ones and twos enrollment, not one to ten. Talk a little bit about the statements themselves. Not going to worry too much about the GAAP-based statements.
Let me ask you the other thing. Would put us into deficit. The state itself reduced our budget two different times.
We had two years in a row where we lost, I think one year we lost $180,000, one year we lost $160,000.
We could, we could point that out to any auditor and say, you know, that's not our fault.
We had in our budget that they, after we'd already said we were going to spend it for salaries, we were all going to take that.
I mean, that, is that count, is a hash then?
Theory we're supposed to manage around that, and still, and we did try to do that. I think, you know, last year even with that, improved. We even improved more. Now, I understand that there are no plans currently for that to prevent issues. But the state still has their budget issues, and we see what legislature comes back in January. I'm sure all of these things will be on the table.
Is that saying a lack of planning on your part does not create emergency on my part? We do have opportunity with the new system to increase our revenue by, you know, providing different services to other counties and things like that.
I don't know, I don't know that we'll turn that into a profit center. I think we might be able to offset some of our costs. Share them with other counties. But we're still, people that we were employing through visa, we're paying for. We're still going to have to pay for 100% of some of those positions. But now they'll be our employees instead. The money we're going to spend is going to be minimally different, maybe less because they will pay on various kinds of pay standards, which is slightly higher than ours. Might save a few dollars by hiring themselves instead of hiring people. I don't look for that to be a cost savings unless we come up with some ideas of things we can do better than other counties to hire those people.
That is, that's possible, Ron.
It takes someone as far as we can. But if you look at page 15. Actually, that's on 14. 14 is our governmental funds balance sheet. We used to have three funds. We had Fund 51, and we had some construction projects. Last year, we didn't have any, so we moved down to two funds, the general current expense, which is Fund 11, and special revenue, which is Fund 61. And you can see there's a green shaded line here near the bottom of the schedule that says unassigned fund balance. Too many negative figures are unassigned fund balance. But up under liability, there's another post-employment benefits payable, which is $1.6 million. We get the net, there's two together. And we have some restricted fund balances. But our total fund balance is negative 1.5. If you offset that with 1.6, that's kind of how we get to cover our other schedule. It takes what goes under unrestricted. Fund 61, those are project funds that we get. We can only spend them in the way that the project says we can spend them. They're helpful to what things we need to do, but those are funds that we can take into what we want to do. On revenue, on page 15, you can see the general current expense. There's a line here called net change in fund balances. You can see that our fund balance increased by $376,000. And a lot of that, we haven't gotten to rep the Medicaid revenue, but we've got others to respond to. The next section of the report is, it starts on page 20, is the notes section. I joke, if you're having trouble sleeping some night, that would be a cure for that, to read those notes because there's a lot of well-plate language in there that the accountants understand and some of us don't understand what's in there. People at GASB have way too much time on their hands to come up with all these statements. Sometimes argue about what the meaning of days is. At the end of the report are some schedules compared budget, numbers to actual numbers. There were both Fund 11 and Fund 61. There is a schedule in there that has certification by our chairman of liability for the teacher comparison system. And then the last page on 58 is a summary of the excess levy. Shows you what we collected, the different categories in the levy and how much money we spent in the current year and in the current levied date. So, that's on page 58. Perhaps you might look at that. If you have any questions about that, you might contribute. This is on our website. We're public to see and look at.
Do people ever come up to you, the general public?
Not, not really. I mean, I've got a few questions every year. But I think a lot of times we were counting how many times people have clicked on things. And people do look at these and open them up and look at them, so I'm sure that there are. Before I got into this business, I used to look at the paper just out of curiosity and see the financial statements. So, I'm sure there's people out there looking at it, and people are astute about things, sort of making assumptions and reading the notes. This is, this is a good thing that we do this in the public.
You mentioned oil or like, like a computer could generate some of this. This is asking your comment for the future of accounting. I mean, I was reading the New York Times Education section this weekend. And they're actually recommending that young people not choose accounting or certain parts of accounting because it will all be taken over by the computer. And there'll still be needs for certain areas, and maybe there'll, maybe just computer technology and accounting together will be what is needed in the future.
Maybe they have a crystal ball. I thought that accounting and finance is one of the fastest-growing areas for employment for people. It's a great career for young folks. I've got a career day at the Rose School. I talked about that. When I worked at the power company, at one time, we had an office in Fairmont. We had 21 CPAs working in the office there in Fairmont. And a lot of those folks are still working at the power company, but they're working personnel, they're working operations, they're working other areas of the company. They have got nothing to do with accounting per se, but the skills that they have in looking at numbers, analyzing those things, or variously well.
Analytics, yeah, definitely.
Served them well. I recommend it as a career. I don't see it going away. Are there any questions? As I say, if you think of something later or you want to follow up, please. I'll share the answer with you.
What are the other, let me ask you that. If we're getting more economic activity in January, you know, because of the pipeline, there'll be an increased property valuation in the county for a while, meaning the equipment here or the pipes itself or the...
We've all seen that for a while because there's a timeline. These public utilities and some other businesses, their valuation date was last December 31st. The brass have to do their assessments. They just plan to freeze them out as of July 1st of this year. That's the property taxes will track for 1819. So, that's already, that's a year or two down the road. So, all this other stuff, while it'll have an impact, it won't be needed because of how long it takes for the assessed values to become taxable.
Georgia, we're two years into our levy.
Actually, this is the fourth year of levy. Next year will be the fifth year. So, we have to start talking very soon, I think in January, about when the next election is going to be.
That's where I compute, because we have 2015 to 2019.
Well, 1819 fiscal year, which is the one that starts next July 1st, is the last year of the budget. So, by, by January, or June of 2019, we have to have the levy election.
Right. So, yeah, then 2018, we'll be looking at three days. Trying to write down.
Decide when we want to have that and what's going to be. So, we'll start having those conversations, I would anticipate, in January, we'll start getting, start making some decisions. The first, no, you can do these on parallel. You've got to decide what's going to be in the next election. And you have to decide when we want that election to be. Actually, set the date, and that sets the timeline of different things that have to be done in the current year. You set the date, and you count back, I think it's 180 days. There are things that have to be done.
I remember you giving us a bullet.
I'll have to look at the Secretary of State's Office site to see if anything that's changed. They have a guidebook for local memorials to do election. Reviewers, calendars. We'll start working on that. Start identifying possible things that will have to be done while we're there. Be careful, you can't use it as a promoting thing. Certainly, it's information to share with people about what the levy does. We have to present factual information about what it does and what it pays for. Encourage people to vote for it, encourage people to give them information. I think the last time, more, Mr. Wade, at every meeting that we had on, during the time we kept people in school, even though maybe a huge crowd of people didn't show up, you know, this covered as part of the coverage of the board meeting. I think the more we talk about it and explain what it pays for, what it does, and all the things, the more I think it is.
Along that line, we've just had Votes for Prosperity bond pass, and that's a good thing. The governor spoke to us in September, and he said he loved us. And he loves students, he loves schools, and so forth. What's the chance that he will do a Schools for Prosperity bond?
I would like to see that. We have a huge problem in West Virginia. I mean, it's nice that the staff here is proud of the school, but this is a 40-year-old building. Our newest school is 30 years old. If we don't start doing something about that, we're going to have, the day rocking at some point. It may be 10 years, it may be 20 years, but we're going to reach a point where this is all going to cave in on us. We do it a little bit in life over a period of years.
If you would have something similar, and they say that was $10 million construction, that would help right now.
But the only mechanism we have in West Virginia for funding school construction is to pass a bond issue. Those, and a lot of counties, not just here, have nothing inclined to pass those. We're authorized, shaped facilities, all these things, other grounds. But the money you get from the state, even if you're not even looking for... But the money you get from the state aid more than you are, even with an excess levy, it doesn't give you any way to fund new construction. Just hopefully keep what you have in operation. At some point, that's gotta change.
Yeah. Was reading out from Charleston. And, and the funding wise, the teachers deserve a raise, possibly?
Yes. Well, not just teachers, but all.
Yeah, all the service personnel, yeah, all the, most of the.
Uh, one, you know, we were talking in Fred about bus operators. Have subs and that's gonna get horses. You can make twenty to thirty-five thousand dollars here driving a bus. You can go to the, well, if you want to gas stop, you can make fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. It's something on our way.
Yeah, right.
Well, and I'm all about training, but I mean, uh, to become a school bus operator is just compared to losing volunteer firefighters. I mean, the schooling that you have to go to in order to keep your certification. I mean, and we still don't pay them for school, correct? I mean, substitute bus drivers, I mean, they're, they're going to school. On their own dime, basically.
We get, we get reimbursed for training them.
Right.
But they don't get.
But they don't get any money.
Right.
For going through.
Right. Exactly right.
Hey, sir, you try to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to have a motion for attachments B and C, the payment of bills in the budgetary items.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have three there, request for use of school bus transportation for out-of-state travel. BU Middle to Kennywood in May. Ken Upsher High School Journalism to, um, a press decision conference in March. And, um, West Virginia Western College to travel in Mooresville and Limbo, as well as an out-of-county attendance request.
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item eleven, correspondence and information.
Just two items real fast. Uh, Dr. Sampras and I traveled to Charleston today to present, um, um, an SBA grant for a new roof at Tenerton Elementary. It approximately cost a five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, it's an interesting, to say the least, it's an interesting process that they have. You have fifteen minutes, ten to present, five to add to questions, and it's fifteen minutes. So we're hopeful, keeping our fingers crossed. It's a desperate need we have for Tenerton. And we don't have the money to do it. And I told them we don't have the money. And I made the point of letting them know that Upsher County, over the course of the last five, six years, has put in twice as much money into the projects as we've gotten from the SBA. Whereas some counties are, are just putting in twenty percent or less and getting money. So I'm hoping that kind of sways into the fact that we can't put anything into this property. But it's a desperate need.
And probably December before we have.
Yeah. We, hopefully, we'll know by next month. And the other thing, you taught, you were talking about the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. I had a call from a gentleman, uh, who would like to come speak to the board. Uh, not about the pipeline itself, but about the impact that it's going to have on the county as far as people moving in, uh, economic impact as well as school impact. You know, as, as I think George mentioned, when we had the other, the, the fracking or whatever else was going on, we had.
Weather.
Yeah, we had people coming in and then they left, so that caused the drop in, uh, so. From, the way he made it sound is there will be an increase in the number of students. So he was trying to help us prepare for that. So I'm planning on putting it on the next agenda. And that's all.
Next item on the agenda is personnel. That is your attachment, aye. We have a couple blanks. Do you have anything to put in those blanks?
I do not. So I'm assuming, do we have anything for this?
Uh, Mr. Rigor was not in today. We added what things we knew to add.
So should those be struck?
The blanks?
Yes.
Yes, they probably should be struck.
We were hoping, we've been having trouble with getting another maintenance person because of not being able to pass the electric, electrician's test.
Because, see, I mean, there again, I mean, they have to comply with fire marshal.
Right.
Regulations. Uh, I guess I motioned to approve the superintendent's recommendation on personnel with the exemption of striking item one and item four of the.
Thank you.
Take the motion.
All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to hear this, thank you. Item thirteen, approval of memorandum of understanding with Creative Connections Psychotherapy.
This is a new, um, group that is coming into this area. And it's very simple, similar to Youth Health Services Summit Center. Uh, uh, and it's, it works the same way. It doesn't cost us anything. They, they get their own patients and then they get permission from us to go see them like Youth Health Services and Summit Center do in the schools. No cost to the camera.
Do they have to pass any kind of, um, background checks, things like that?
Yeah, she's getting, we're gonna have a.
Okay.
No, it's good, I mean. Uh, I mean, as long as we have the space, I've spoke, that's the.
Yeah, and that, that's gonna be when the schools know about it, they'll, you know, they, they now, when, when Youth Health Services and Summit Center come in, they usually find a place for them to go meet with the students. So I'm, I'm not in. They're so desperate for those needs, I think they'll find a place if they have to.
Right. But at the, uh, state level, when we have a School Board Association meeting, everyone is always saying, we need more counselors.
Yeah.
So these are free counselors to us.
Yeah.
A lot of these aren't their bad.
All right, do I have a motion to accept this memorandum of understanding?
Just move. Second.
All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item fourteen, approval of snow removal bids for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. You have an additional sheet of paper. And you received some information in email.
I think he explained it in there with the, um, in meeting with the people for the bids, when they had to.
Well, actually, we had, we had, uh, four bidders. Three of them, uh, bid only a few locations and for per treatment.
Do we have any kind of, can I, can I see that information?
Sorry. And actually, um. Is it Highland? Mr. Goffers is here. Um, Highland, uh, submitted a bid which was actually less than last year's. Uh, and also with the understanding that if we were willing to, uh, for a two-year bid, we'd drop it another.
Ten percent.
Another ten percent, which actually put it twenty, how much less that it was. I think last year was a hundred and twenty-two, now it's a hundred and two here. Something like that, I can't, I don't have the sheet, I'm sorry.
No, just still a treatment, anytime that there is precipitation.
Yep, yes, yes.
Uh, as far as salt. Each, all schools.
Right. And it will actually save us money over what we paid last year.
The good thing about that is we know what our budget is. We know what we're gonna pay, and it doesn't matter what happens with the weather, this is what we're gonna pay.
Well, it's something that, you know, with liability issues, I mean, we have to do, we have to stay on top of.
Yeah, I've noticed, um, with the workers' compensation carriers, when we have a surge or a fall in the parking lot, they wanna know what the weather was like, they wanna know who is responsible for cleaning the parking lot and some of those things. So they're paying attention to that. Uh, I think we're seeing a decline in those kinds of, uh, injuries for workers' comp. And, you know, all it takes is a, a serious injury and your, your compensation rates are based somewhat on your history of, of what kind of claims you've had in the past. It's important to do that correctly.
So wouldn't, can you explain, uh, like, when we offered the bids, how that works? What we, we told the, the members they were bidding on?
Um, we put together a bid packet to explain, uh, what the requirements were for removing the snow. And, uh, we brought some sidewalks.
Right, all those details.
Not the damage to trucks, and did you have to have insurance, uh, different kinds of licenses, all those kinds of things.
Sure.
And then we asked them to bid, uh, per treatment, uh, per location, for season, and for whole county.
Okay.
So we had them bid in three different ways. And they can also offer a monthly rate.
Okay.
Plus, they could have to plow two or three times a day if necessary.
Okay.
Last year, we did have a really bad winter, so we probably put a little bit of that on it.
Yeah, I know, I was a little upset after.
We can't, we knew what.
I was in Iowa, that's cool.
We knew what we were gonna pay and, um, we can have a real bad winter this year. So more, more than one year, you have, uh, you have that little certainty that, you know, one year they might be above that, but next year it might be a little bit colder, hotter than that.
And accounting purposes, it'd be much easier.
And I asked them to keep records of, you know, how many kinds are treated.
Sure. Great. Okay.
Now, what we have to call first, we have to call them or?
They just go.
We, they, they kind of know when, but the principal at the school has the contact information. If they feel that something needs to be done, they can call and say, send someone in. Usually, they don't know like what the weather is and they're not treating.
They've come out, I've noticed they've come out pre-treated sometimes before it happened.
But I guess what I'm asking, I mean, our verbiage is in there as far as, uh, all lots are gonna be plowed by, what, six-thirty in the morning? Previous to school or?
Well, the, the problem with that is they may not start until six-thirty.
Right, right. But I mean, night before, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how they're notified.
They just watch, I'm assuming they watch the weather just like we do. And they're out there, I know they're out there a lot of times.
I suspect when Keith was here, he coordinated that.
I guess that's what I'm asking, I mean, does this fall down the, the jack?
Yeah, Mr. Goffers.
Well, we, we do have Jeff Dean now, but we can make sure that he's coordinated and, and, uh.
And you're all right with that? As far as the coordination process?
Yeah, we're, we're pretty good at used to, um, process and pretty, pretty, pretty able to go on. As far as, you know, being prepared for school, being prepared to, uh, hospital, being, uh, being, uh, prepared as we've been doing in the past. We, the, the, the bar seems to be.
If we have concerns about, uh, the itself, what is it we call, what do we call it, the last one or the last?
In this case, the same company is getting, just has had a bid with us.
Yes.
So we know their track record.
And they know their expectations.
Okay.
So I guess my next question, regardless of whether there's school or not, our lot, our parking lots are still gonna be treated?
Oh, yeah.
And clean?
Yeah. If we don't have school that day, that gives them the day to get it all cleaned up.
Right, right.
Right, Mr. Goffers? If we don't have school that day, your, your crew's out there clearing it for the next day.
Our typical protocol is they would get less, uh, turn night, last day of school. So the board office is figured out, uh, in the seven AM, because we do have a group in there. And then, um, they, they just throw in time to get everything else. We're gonna do our next day. And I can always communicate that.
It's so Saturday night, they might wait until Sunday or Sunday evening.
Well, I mean, it's still our policy. I mean, if there's, if there's no school, then there's no sporting activity, right?
Unless we're, unless it's running into a few days and as things improve, they, the, uh, Mr. Vincent or, uh, the A.D. will call me and say, like basketball team wants to, they can have a practice today.
Practice, okay.
And I usually will determine, that will be determined by me, depending on road conditions at that time, even if we didn't have school.
Right.
But even here, even when there's no school, there's people.
That's.
In and out.
Right, right.
This building's almost used twenty percent.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to accept the snow removal bids as presented?
Subdued.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
So make a motion and we go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor, placing above a saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are now in executive session.